I have five fifteen, I shall call this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We shall have roll call, please, Stacy.
From number trails?
Yes.
Salvi, Miller, Melerson?
Yes.
Mayor Waller.
Ah, yes. Well, greetings, first of all, to everyone. Uh, once again, we shall start, as always, with Mayor Waller's quote for the day. This one in the spirit of baseball comes from Jackie Robinson. A life is not important, except in the impact it has on other lives. Okay. Next on our agenda for this evening, well, first, before we get to that, um, unless there are some additions or corrections, I will entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Oh, who to approve the agenda?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And all those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, we have citizens' comments, and this is the time, if you want to approach a council, state your name, address, and let us know what your business is.
My name is Mary Elizabeth Bezanson. Two oh seven East Eighth Street, I own my home. And I have just, well, no, four years ago, I retired from the university, and I've decided to stay in Morris in retirement. So part of that is my enjoyment of walking. So I wanted to talk about sidewalks. A few years ago, maybe six or seven, I tripped on the city sidewalk, and then we had that wonderful grinding experience, so we flattened out a whole bunch of sidewalks. That was great. The problem is, I think we have more work to do. So there are a number of trees that have lifted, I apologize for not knowing the technical word for this, the slabs of sidewalks, making tripables bigger. So I was hoping that the city had thought about providing some funding for individuals to fix their sidewalks, because what the rumor is in town is you're on your own for your sidewalk, but I didn't know if that was true or not. So I wondered if it was true. It's an issue of liability, certainly, if someone falls on your sidewalk. There are also a number of places where the trees are on the boulevard that are lifting the sidewalk. I would think that the city would be interested in fixing those, since it is then the city's responsibility, I assume. The other thing I wanted to say is that I'm fairly disappointed in the slowness of city action. I don't quite know why I have become the harbinger of this, but I tripped on the sidewalk in front of the library. And this was when Blaine was still the city manager. So he went over and he marked all the places that were tripables with paint of various colors, which I didn't understand. Recently, someone has replaced one of those slabs with a very strange-looking slab that has rocks on it, so it doesn't look the same. But the paint has been washed off in the five or six years since it was marked. So I was hoping for the safety of all those who went to the library, the city could have the front of the library ground down, so it would be smooth, so people would not fall. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in.
You're very welcome.
Ciao. Next up, Sid.
I'm up. Hello, friends, I am Sid Bauer, I live at eleven Elm Street, I do not own my home sadly. Um, but I wrote some notes, and I'm gonna kind of read off of them, because I was intentional about writing these words down, and I wanted to share with you some of my thoughts. Um, so, I wanted to come chat today to get your informal permission or blessing to start help, helping guide some community conversation, or thinking, or dreaming, or research about the future of this building in particular, um, the Morris Senior Center slash Community Center. Uh, but before I do that, I wanted to share a little bit of Sid context and history about how long I've called this place my home, because I've been here for a little while now. So I moved up here in two thousand and fifteen to go to college, and I was just telling Olivia earlier today, she was interviewing me for the news, about how I came to college knowing that I didn't want to do it for a career path or for academia. I came to college knowing the importance of meeting people and hearing new ideas. And I think back on seventeen-year-old Sid, and I say, good job, Sid. That's true for you. Um, so I came up here intentionally to meet people and to know people and to learn from them in two thousand and fifteen. In two thousand and sixteen is when Troy Goodno hooked me in. And that's when I started working on projects like the solar on the city buildings, I was working on the battery project now that's installed at the university. I've been a big part, part of the German partnership, I've traveled to Zarbeck in the past, and as you all hopefully know, I'm a large cheerleader and advocate for the Morris model and have been since two thousand and sixteen now. In two thousand and eighteen is when I started driving the Transit, which is six years ago now, which is kind of bananas to me, um, been a little while. I graduated in two thousand and nineteen, and that year is kind of the year I decided, I'm staying. Uh, the world does not call me elsewhere, this place feels like my home. And so although it has been my home since two thousand and fifteen, and unofficially, I never announced it, it has been my home since two thousand and fifteen, I decided to be here. Um, in two thousand and twenty-one is when the county hired me to do the organics program, and then just this last year, in two thousand and twenty-three, I started volunteering with Robert over in the kitchen next door, um, preparing and packing up the over a hundred meals he delivers to seniors, um, every day. So a little bit of context, that this place has been my home for almost ten years now, which I just turned twenty-seven last month. That feels like a large chunk of my life, like a whole ten years as just a little baby adult, uh, feels like a big deal. And so I've been thinking on this kind of milestone of almost ten years in Morris about how I still so passionately, in my heart and in my brain, want to be here. And I want to build life here, and I want to build community here, and that is my plan, is to be here. Um, and so along those lines, something in particular I've been thinking about is how I want to be actively engaged and intentional about living here and being here, and building joy and building community throughout this entire life of hopefully more than twenty-seven years that I plan to live here, right? I got a long time to go. Um, and some of those things I want to be intentional about are thinking and learning with other people. I want to be intentional about knowing all sorts of folks in town, which the bus does a good job of helping me with. And I really want to be actively engaged in my time and in my life, right? Like, we only get to do it once, I want to be thoughtful and caring about it. And so that's how we come back to this building. Um, and my desire to be actively engaged in the long-term process of what community building is, and because of that, I've been doing some research and thinking in my brain. Um, we are blessed to live in a state that has resources galore, um, such as the sustainable, regional sustainable development partnerships, let's see if I get the acronyms right. Um, the Department of Public Transformation is a really big one, the West Central Initiative, um, is a big group, and all of them are currently doing research and funding, cash dollars, uh, for reactivating public spaces, right? They're doing, thinking about how do we build, how do we bring community leaders together to take spaces that are underutilized and make them more beneficial for the entire community? And so that's what I've been thinking about. Flip the page. When I think about this building and the potential it has, there's a million different things that come to mind, right? There's a million different things that other people have suggested to me. Some of the big ones, um, art spaces, a lot of people are doing things with art spaces right now to revamp even this room, right, and to celebrate our community in a beautiful, lovely way, is something that has potential here. Um, I think about having conversations, something that the seniors did for many, many years, um, when they had their club, just coming here to communicate and to chat and to be friends, um, and doing that across age or religion or family history or whatever brought you to Morris, right? Having conversations with our neighbors. I think about this building as a winter space, which we all know is very important, because we cannot always go outside unless you come to the snow fort in my yard, you're all invited. I think about this place as a hub of community, right? Library, movie theater, grocery store, this is the center, quite literally, of our downtown, of our community. And something that I think about a lot also is the kitchen, obviously, and how there is potential to feed people on an industrial level here, and how that ties into another thing that people are putting out for funding right now, which is resiliency hubs. So the concept of, this building already has solar panels on it, it's got an industrial kitchen. I wouldn't be surprised if Griffin is making big, wonderful plans to put a battery on this building at some point, right? And so the concept of, let's say, a hundred mile an hour winds come through town and knock out power for three days, who knows when that might happen? Um, this is a place that people could be safe, and people could be fed, and people could come to. So I think of it in a bajillion different ways, right? And the point of all these ideas is not to take action right now, that's not the point at all. The point is that I am really interested in starting some intentional, thoughtful process into building something throughout my life, right, and throughout being here in this community. Um, and so I really want, and I'm passionate right now about bringing people together to think about what this space could be, to doing research into who wants to fund making this space what it could be, um, and to having conversation with you, our leaders, about how this, this literal building um, could be bolstered up to really support our community in the ways that they want it, want to be supported. And so that's kind of the essence of the blessing or the conversation I was hoping to open up today, is that I would really like to take the next step forward into researching how other communities are reactivating their public spaces. I would really like to learn from our seniors who utilized this space for years about what made it special to them and why they came here. Um, and I would really like to initiate some long-term envisioning and planning for what this community center could be. Um, so that's really the conversation I wanted to open up, I wanna, I want to build, this is what I wrote down today when I was sitting in my yard, right before I came here. I want to build life, conversation, and connection in this town for the rest of my years, and I think this space, this building, is a real asset to those dreams. So that's really all I'm here for today, to just kind of open a conversation, to plant some little seeds in everyone's brains, um, that I would love to think about this, and I'd love to be some people of power behind initiating these dreams. So do you have any thoughts for me right off the bat, or things you're thinking about? Because that's why I'm here.
Sid, I think you ought to run for city council.
You're not the first one to tell me that, you guys better watch out. No, but I'm just thinking about it, right?
That's what each and every one of us are doing, sitting on this side
Absolutely.
of the desk. But no, I appreciate your insight and your thoughtfulness and your passion.
Yeah.
You know, it's, this is a city building, obviously, and, uh, you know, we're probably, limit to what we can, probably can do.
Sure, and that's, the point is not to decide what it is, it's to think about the potential and to brainstorm it, and then we have all these resources in our state to fund a lot of these things, so I think we should utilize those. Um, and I was asked to come chat with you Friday, um, Stacy said, will you come chat with Becca first? And I said, I am driving the bus for ten hours on Monday, and then I had appointments to go to today. But I heard the request to go chat with you, Becca, about all this and just think about it, so I would still like to do that. This just came first.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you!
All right, next up, we have John from Ida Bailey. He is gonna speak to us about the financial health of our city.
That's not a real great way to put it, but yes, I am John Hagan. Uh, I'm with Ida Bailey, I've been with Ida Bailey for about eight and a half years. Um, I worked strictly in the government space in different local government aspects, so cities, counties, school districts, all things government. Um, I'm, I've been involved on, as kind of the lead, uh, on the city years back, and I'm more in the audit manager role, a little bit behind the scenes, more of the review function. But tonight, we'll be going over the executive summary, it's kind of a condensed version of the financial statements. Government accounting standards get longer and longer each year, which means more and more pages to those financial statements. So in an effort to kind of condense that, give you guys the information you need with some comparability with prior years, um, that's what we're here to do. That's what we're here to do tonight with the executive summary. Uh, I do want to point out that we did finalize the audit, uh, on April thirtieth, so it was a couple weeks ago. Um, so that is all done and wrapped up, um, ready to go. So we will just be going over the results today. Uh, first one is the audit opinion, so management is responsible for three things each year, that the financial statements are prepared in accordance with the proper accounting standards, which is GAAP. Uh, there are no material misstatements involved in the financial statements, and that they are presented fairly. So we as auditors, we come out and obtain reasonable but not absolute assurance through a series of tests, procedures, questions, and ultimately come to conclusion and issue an audit opinion. This year, the audit opinion was an unmodified opinion, which basically just means a clean bill of health, fancy way of saying, uh, clean bill of health. Exactly what you're looking for and what you guys have received in previous years. A secondary opinion was what we call a single audit, which is over the federal funds of the city. This is a requirement for any entity that expends over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, in a single calendar year. Um, it is kind of a arbitrary threshold that the federal government has out there. Based on the city's size, you guys usually cross this threshold. Um, and the major federal funding that you guys have received in FY twenty-three was airport funding uh, for the taxi lane construction, which made up about seven hundred and seventy thousand for that program specifically, but all in all, you guys are about nine hundred thousand in FY twenty-three in federal expenditures. So with all of that, there's some additional procedures and tests that we do as auditors, um, to meet these federal requirements, and then we issue an opinion over those, uh, as well. And again, the city received an unmodified or clean bill of health over those funds as well. So with an audit opinion, we do report formal federal audit find, formal audit findings, um, with a couple different buckets. First one being your financial statements, and there is one finding there associated with the preparation of the financial statements, including proposed journal entries and restatement. So we as auditors, we are, um, asked by the city to prepare the financial statements, as I mentioned earlier, those get longer and longer each year. More footnotes to put in, I think your guys' financial statements are just under a hundred pages now. If you look back fifteen, twenty years ago, it was probably in that forty to fifty range. So we've almost doubled in that timeframe. So with that, it comes at a responsibility and technicality to be in accordance with those standards, so that's what we're asked to do as auditors, and just make sure that everything is kosher, um, from a financial statement prep. With that, we do propose a number of journal entries associated with some of the uniqueness of governments with pension, OPEB, um, some long-term debt, stuff like that, uh, just to get those financial statements presented accordingly. Um, and then the restatement this year, I want to point out that Whitney had received some communications this year from both OSA, State Auditor's Office, and Ellers, um, that the TIF districts associated with the city were considered pay-as-you-go TIF districts, um, and because of that, the reporting needed to be changed. Uh, those should not fall within the city's, um, debt obligations. Uh, those are kind of just the, the responsibility of the developer once the TIF is set up. Because of that, we changed the presentation of it, um, and because there was a change, it was a formality of calling it a restatement, so. That is what that one finding associated with the city was. Secondary bucket, again, is that federal, there were no findings associated with that. And then the third bucket is Minnesota legal compliance, which is a separate area that the state of Minnesota requires us auditors to glance through, more compliance-related statutes and stuff, and no findings were associated with that. Okay, so that kind of encompasses the end results and everything. Uh, before I move on, does anybody have any quick questions on anything I just went over? Okay, I'll kind of speed it up a little bit here as we get into some of the numbers. The first slide we have is the cash investment balances of the city over the last five years, just for comparability. Uh, I apologize for the color scheme on here, it's a little bit tough to distinguish between the different buckets. Uh, but within your two thousand and twenty-three bucket, it's broken down by liquor, your utility funds, and then also your governmental, basically, everything else. Uh, total cash balances for the city, uh, comes in at about twelve million. Um, and then one thing to point out for cash investments here is that this does not include restricted cash. Um, you guys do have a bucket of about four hundred and fifty thousand set aside as a formality restricted through, uh, the Minnesota PFA for future, uh, infrastructure improvements and stuff associated with some of that PFA debt. Next, we'll go into the general fund, which is the main operating fund of the city. I'm not gonna go through all the numbers on this, but this is a budget-to-actual comparison, uh, just for your guys' purposes, to see where the actual numbers fell associated with the general fund. Um, one thing I do want to point out, there were some larger variances, both in the intergovernmental revenues and the transit compared to budget, and this was simply just because you guys expected to start the, uh, transit facility expansion in FY twenty-three. A little bit of a pause, it's probably, I don't know if it's broken ground yet or started here in FY twenty-three, but probably in the works. Um, so that's, the discrepancy there is I just didn't get quite started in FY twenty-three. Uh, other than that, I would like to focus on the ending fund balance of the general fund of about five point three million, if you guys can kind of mentally circle that. Uh, we'll kind of cover that in the next few slides. So that ending fund balance is a positive fund balance, what does that do to the city? It does a number of things. Uh, first and foremost, it attributes a favorable bond rating. So as you guys foresee, uh, debt issuances in the, in the future for potential projects or anything like that, having that additional fund balance gives you some additional flexibility and capitalizing on better, uh, debt rates. Secondly, it produces investment income, uh, having a source of working capital. Um, basically, your money working for you within the bank, the more money you put in, the more it works for you. And then thirdly, most importantly, offering a cushion for unexpected shortfalls, revenue shortfalls or unexpected, uh, expenditures in future years. Next slide, again, is kind of just informational, different fund balance categories, I'm not gonna go too far in depth here, this is really kind of government-specific, really into the weeds. Um, just knowing that there are different levels of that ending fund balance, you can have restricted dollar amounts, uh, imposed, uh, on kind of the source of whatever that funding is. If it's debt service, it's restricted for debt service. If you guys do a bond issuance, it's restricted for that particular capital projects, et cetera. Uh, the last three buckets, they're committed, assigned, and unassigned, those are really up to the designation of the city, those are internally. Um, basically, you guys have that up to your will to use, now you guys can earmark, commit, or assign dollars for specific projects, or leave it in kind of your unassigned, which would be your all-encompassing rainy day fund, if you will. So ending fund balance for the city as of, um, two thousand and twenty-three to twenty-one twenty-three was about five point three million dollars in the general fund only. Um, again, that is made up of a couple different buckets, uh, being your committed, unassigned, um, and non-spendable. The biggest bucket there is your unassigned, your true rainy day, you have a small chunk, uh, for committed of future, uh, capital and fro, capital improvements in accordance with your fund balance policy, and then a little bit of a non-spendable bucket with, um, some prepaid and inventory-type items that are already basically paid for. So where should the city be? Uh, unfortunately, there is no golden rule out there, there's no necessarily right or wrong, it's up to each city's discretion. Um, and each city kind of operates a little bit differently. So there are some general guidelines out there, the OSA, Minnesota State Auditor's Office, they suggest about thirty-five to fifty percent of annual expenditures kind of sitting in that fund balance. The GFOA is a national organization, they're a bit, a little bit lighter, suggesting about fifteen percent. Um, so where the city stacks up, if we go to the next slide, is your unreserved fund balance there. FY twenty-three, and very consistent over the last five years, hovering right about that fifty percent of mark. So if you take half your operating expenditures for the entire year, that's what you have sitting in that kind of reserve. So you could operate as-is with no additional revenue coming in for about six months, sitting in that general fund. Uh, again, I'd say there is no specific golden rule, I'd say you guys are probably above what we typically see as somewhere in that, you know, thirty to forty mark, but again, there is no right or wrong. So that covers the general fund, I'll kind of high-level talk through a few other funds of the city, first one being your debt service funds. Again, these are pretty self-explanatory, set up, uh, to pay back future debt requirements for the city. You guys do have about a handful of debt obligations still out there. Um, as you can see, this fund balance of the debt services going down, which is what you'd like to see as you guys are extinguishing those debt requirements. Um, if you guys were to go out for an issuance, that would go back up, and therefore is a cycle of debt service. Next, we'll get into some of the utility funds, uh, for the city, first one being the water fund. Again, this is a line graph here showing the last three years from an operating standpoint. Uh, the gray line, again, I apologize for the color scheme here, is kind of the second line down, um, for your operating revenues, about one point five million in two thousand and twenty-three. Top line is operating expenditures of one point seven, and the difference between the two is an operating loss for FY twenty-three of about two hundred thousand. Uh, there was a rate increase effective on, in two thousand and twenty-four, to kind of, I'm guessing, um, kind of switched the swing of that, uh, downward trend, you know, cost of operating utilities and water costs et cetera going up. Um, so passing some of that along to, to the city's citizens now, um, to make sure that you're operating sustainably. Next fund is the sewer fund, similar graph over the last three years. This one, top line being revenues, middle line being your expenditures, and the third line being your operating income. So the sewer fund is operating at a surplus each of the last three years, uh, coming in at an operating income of about a hundred and eighty thousand. One thing to point out, both this side and the last side does not include some of that non-operating stuff, some of the interest expense, if you guys have any grant money coming in, stuff like that. We really try to hone in on kind of the operational standpoint, just because that non-operating stuff is a little bit unique each year. So your ending net position, that's kind of the counterpart to fund balance, utility funds report a little bit differently, uh, and report a net position, which incorporates long-term liabilities and assets right directly within the fund. Um, so your ending net position does incorporate those capital asset balances, the book value of those. Now, a lot of that is tied up into your infrastructure, which isn't really sellable, but from a dollar standpoint, your net book value, uh, does incorporate that within your net position. So your net position, your water fund is sitting at about seventeen million and change, uh, with about, and then sewer is about five million. Next slide is, is a little bit more of a liquid way to look at those two funds from as far as a cash standpoint. Um, unrestricted cash in the sewer, in the, in the, sorry, excuse me, the water fund is sitting at about one point, uh, let's see, one, one million there, and then sewer fund is about one point eight million, um, as opposed to, uh, your annual operating expenditures. So the sewer, the water fund here, uh, can operate as-is for about eight months, and the sewer fund is actually coming in about six years worth in that, that ending, so very healthy in sewer. And then the last fund before I leave today is the operations of the liquor fund. Uh, similar graph here showing top line sales, the cost of those sales, and then ultimately, your gross profit is your red line. Each of the last five years, the liquor fund has been operating with growth, positive gross sales. Again, this does not incorporate some of those operating expenditures, um, but just from a, a gross margin standpoint, um, operating at a surplus of just under six hundred thousand. So after taking, oh, excuse me, the last side here is just gross profit. Um, so what are you guys, cost of that liquor as opposed to what you're selling it for, gross profit of about twenty-four percent. Uh, very, uh, consistent over the last five years. Um, and statewide data there, just for kind of comparability, is about twenty-six percent, so right in line with the state average there. So I know I kind of sped through some of the numbers, um, wanted everyone to get outside and enjoy the nice weather, but before I go, does anybody have any questions, anything I ran through a little too quickly at all?
I really don't have any questions for, for, for John, I, the reports, yeah, the reports, very thorough, thank you for that.
Yeah, you bet. If you guys do have any questions pop up, please go for, relay those, relay those through Whitney. And before I go, I do want to thank the city for having me tonight, and then especially Whitney, uh, and the rest of the finance staff for all their help throughout the audit process. Um, I say this at every audit, but I would say Whitney's ability to help us and her responsiveness is very appreciated. We do not get that at all cities, um, so I do want to give a special shout-out to her. She makes our lives pretty easy, so we appreciate it, so. Thank you, guys, and, and have a good night.
Thank you, John, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no public hearings tonight. We shall move on to reading and approval of our regular meeting minutes from April twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four.
I will make a motion for the approval of the four twenty-three, twenty-four regular meeting minutes.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. Oh, okay, yeah, I got you. Uh, we have a motion and a second to approve the regular meeting minutes from April twenty-third. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have the condensed version of the minutes for the newspaper. And I will move approval of the condensed version of the minutes.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the condensed version of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is the consent agenda, which consists of the audit of city bills, the transit reports, and the gambling reports. And I guess I can move approval of the items on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Uh, I'll just open it up for discussion on any of the items.
Can I ask a question?
You can say no.
I guess, sure.
I'm curious about the transit reports. As a transit driver, I don't usually see those numbers. If somebody was interested in those numbers, me, me, I'm the only one who probably would be interested in those numbers. Where would I go?
I need copy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I need your copy.
Yeah, okay, sure, cool. I'm curious.
Yeah, normally what they track is ridership and all that good stuff.
Yeah. I've definitely seen one in the past, but I'd just be curious of seeing some of the trends.
Hey, you're, just so you know, the, this report says that for April of two thousand twenty-four, we had five thousand three hundred and fifty passengers. Versus two thousand twenty-three, we had four thousand five hundred and seventy-four for that same period.
I believe that.
So, yeah, you can probably see it.
I sure can.
Okay, good question. Thank you. Any other discussion from members of the council? I had one question on line sixty-three. You usually break out the law enforcement expenditures, and I seen there was a special assessment for nine hundred dollars. I don't typically see that, and I just wonder what that was for.
Yeah, the county charges one, one time per year, fifty dollars per special assessment that they keep track of. So, Deanna, it runs through their county property tax system, and then it funnels to us.
Okay.
So, each year, they charge us.
And then there was a separate line item there for property tax of forty-nine hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-nine cents. What property is that for? Is that for a specific property?
It's for multiple ones. There's the airport, the airport, rented farmland, some ponds, city hall.
Okay, so it's just made up of various amount of parcels.
It's a May property tax payment, so.
Okay. And that coincides probably with the May fifteenth? No, probably not.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
Fifteenth.
Okay, all right. That's the only question I had. Anything else, Kim? Anything? Nothing? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor of the items on the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We shall move on to petitions, requests, and communications. And I guess the first thing we have to address is an appointment to the park board, Ms. Haley Karas. I'm not sure I know Haley, but it's nice that we have a brave soul to volunteer.
Do we have to approve that, or is that just an F?
Pardon?
Do we have to approve that?
Yes, we do.
Okay, sorry, I gotta get back to that. I will move on that motion to approve Haley Karas to this appointment to the park board.
And with, with a thank you for her obvious volunteering for, to be on the park board, I will second.
All right, yes, of course. We, we appreciate all those board volunteers out there. So, we have a motion and a second to approve the appointment of Haley Karas to the park board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have a, we have to accept a donation to our parks. This is from Kelly Bloom, and it's in the amount of forty dollars.
There any special designation?
There's none cited here.
Nothing cited?
There's nothing stated, at least that I know.
Okay. Well, very good. Special thank you again to, to Kelly Bloom for that. And with that, I will move approval of the acceptance of the donation.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the donation to our parks from Ms. Kelly Bloom. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, we shall move on to ordinances and resolutions. We have three before us. First one is a resolution for the authorization to execute Minnesota D O T grant agreement for the airport improvement excluding land acquisition. Rebecca, would you want to speak to that resolution at all?
Yeah, so this one is for, we were awarded a grant for the lawnmower. So, it's a seventy-five, twenty-five. So, this is just the grant agreement for that, so we can move forward with the purchase.
That'll be nice.
Yeah.
So, I'm gonna move on that resolution for authorization to execute the Minnesota Department of Transportation grant agreement for airport improvement excluding land acquisition.
I'll second. All right, any other discussion on that resolution? We'll put that money to good use, I'm sure. We have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, I shall ask for a roll call vote on that resolution, please.
Councilmember Crails?
Yes.
Salvi Miller-Gullison?
Yes.
Mayor Walters?
Yes. All right, next resolution before us is approving the Morris area community education, education director's contract. That would be for Mr. Tony.
Was this a contract with the dollar amount in it, or just the contract?
It wa, it was.
I was deep in there then.
That first page right there, number one. So, the salary for this year was one oh one, three oh eight, and then next year it'll be one oh five, three sixty, and then there's a couple bonuses incentive pays.
Okay. You know, we're very lucky to have Tony. He's, he's very good at what he does. You can see and manage all of the activity that goes on in our parks with all the different leagues and so forth. It's amazing when you think about it, all the traffic that comes through, and I, I really rarely ever hear any complaints about any, any of the functions that, you know, that are organized through our community ed department. So, shout out to Tony if you're listening. He does a great job. With that, I can move approval of that resolution, the Morris area community education director's contract.
I'll second.
First and a second. And again, Stacy, we'll have roll call vote on that, please.
Just, just a question. In this contract, because this is really with, is this really with the school or with us?
So, it's a joint powers with the community ed, it seems like. So, it's, the contract is with the school, us, someone from the advisory council, the Morris community advisory council.
If you'll recall, we used to give a dollar stipend. It seems to me, I can't remember what the dollar figure was, we used to pay that to the school.
We still do, don't we?
We still.
That's how we do it.
But it was, it was structured differently somehow, I remember, but maybe not. I don't know, maybe I'm wrong on that, too. I can't remember the dollar, but I, it seems to me the structure has changed over the years. But once again, I, I think Tony's very worthy of it.
He's an employee of the school.
Yes.
Yes.
And then we just send our, our, yeah. Yeah, I, I knew that, but I was wondering why we were approving a contract when.
Because it's a joint powers.
Okay, that's, that's where my question was going.
The school and the city.
Because this is based on the school.
Yeah.
Are we, do we participate in the contract negotiations on this? No, that's why I was like, why? Okay, just because it's a joint power that we just provide dollars to. Not, okay.
Well, and then what is the city sure of? Then, do we talk about that?
You know, I'd have to look at the budget. I, off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you.
I get that.
I used to know that, too, and I just can't remember what it is either.
Is it in the joint powers paperwork?
I, I don't know. I know, I just know I budget.
I think it's just a month for some, some of the community ed stuff. I just don't know how much.
That's right. You can just get back to us on that. That's fine. Okay. Well, once again, we have a first and a second on that resolution approving the community education director's contract. And now we can, unless there's further discussion, we can have that roll call vote.
Councilmember Salvi, Crails?
Yes.
Gillison?
Yes.
Miller? Mayor Walters?
Yes. All right, last resolution before us is a resolution authorizing the updating of the city free schedule for weekly camp, capping rates.
Yeah, so we, as we're going through, as we'll talk about, we're getting some online registration for the campground. So, as we're doing that, we're kind of looking at rates, which I think next year, once we get some electric upgraded and things, we'll look at every rate. But right now, we were looking at our weekly rates, and our weekly rates were kind of low compared to what, we were given a couple free days instead of, you know, so we felt that it was fair to have our new rates go for the electrical hookups for, to one eighty, and then sites without electrical hookups for a hundred and fifty for the week. Those are the two changes that we're, we're asking for now as we upgrade some of our electric and the water lines at the campground. Once those get done, we'll look at the whole big picture of our rates, but these are ones we'd like to change now.
Is there any interest in moving to a credit card?
We are. Yeah, yeah, we'll talk about that in my, in my report.
Okay.
Yeah.
That'll kind of coincide with what we're talking about here to a point?
Yeah, yeah, so we can talk about it now if you'd like. So, we've, we've started working with Campspot,
Yeah.
putting together an online reservation system
Okay.
to take reservations out there. So, currently, we don't take reservations. We're moving towards, towards that. We're hoping they get set up by June. I don't know exactly how long they're going to take. So, it could be middle of summer before they get that done. Right now, it's first come, first served, so we don't really, really take any reservations anyway. So, this will be a big, big difference and a big, a good thing, just because we have people coming, we have people calling already wanting spots, and we don't take reservations. So, this will be a nice way to do it. We will, we do have a fee for them, a three dollar fee plus in the credit card fee. So, we are, once this is set up, you'll see our fees when you reserve the park online. You'll see our fee, daily fee, and then there'll be a five dollar fee to reserve, to cover, cover the cost of that. And then as we look at kind of upgrading and our needs at the park, we are looking at getting all of our electrical spots up to fifty amps, and then finishing, I don't think that, oh, yeah, it's on there for later, the tourism recommendations, putting up a building for for our brochures and, and how they can reserve spots and different things like that. So, doing a lot of updates to the park.
You know, I think the upside potential of that park out there is just about endless, really, when you look at it. But I wanted to speak to your fifty amp service upgrade. We have, I have a seasonal site up at Tibson and Owens in Elbe Lake, and of course, that's a city-owned campground as well. And they just went through that whole process last year. They started, and then ran out of money, basically. It's expensive. That upgrade, I think, the manager of the campground said it's in the area of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, wow. I'm getting a quote right now to see.
Well, they have quite a few, I mean, their campground is a lot more mature than this one, has a lot more sites and things. So, I mean, you got to take that three hundred and fifty thousand for what it's worth, but yeah, with, it'd be a nice additional service to have, for sure. Any other discussion on that resolution from the members of the council?
Honestly, I think it's a really good thing that we get, and to your, to your point, right, getting the, since you're getting calls already, something in place, right? I know we've talked about this on numerous occasions, but the, that's really something that's, I don't want to say underutilized, but, but can, can really be a highlight for Morris, you know, as, as people come into town. And so, with that, I will move approval of updating the weekly camping fees.
I'll second.
Okay. All right, if there's no further discussion, we have a first and a second on that. I shall ask for a roll call vote on that resolution, please.
Councilmember Miller? Gillison?
Yes.
Crails?
Yes.
Salvi? Mayor Walters?
Yes. All right, we shall move on to the city managers' reports and recommendations.
Kevin, we need to go back into that resolution approving the financials.
Oh, this one? Oh. Resolution accepting, okay. All right, yeah, I missed this one. I'm sorry. Yeah, now we have an added resolution before us, accepting and approving the two thousand twenty-three annual financial statements for the city of Morris.
I will move on that resolution, accepting and approving the two thousand twenty-three annual financial statements for the city of Morris.
Okay, I'll second that. All right, any other discussion on the financial statements? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote on that, please. Thank you.
Councilmember Gillison?
Yes.
Miller? Salvi? Crails?
Yes.
Mayor Walters?
Yes. Now I can give that back to you. Got a little ahead of myself. Yeah, now we can move on to the city managers' reports and recommendations.
Okay, so we talked about the campground updates. So, last week, I went to a conference, the M C M A conference, three-day conference up north. So, we had speakers that talked about how to sustain a healthy mind mood in a hard and chaotic times. So, they focused a lot on mental health and trying to change the voices in your head. The stress happens. Listened to speaker who spoke on telling stories of your city. So, we had talked about how how to find your city's voice and, and tell the story, and if we're consistent with the story, it helps kind of promote what we're doing. We had a speaker who talked about connections and making sure that we are all connecting, gave us some questions such as, what is your why as councilmembers who are running for office? What are your hopes for the city? We're here to, we're all here to make the city better for, for the next generation. So, kind of seeing what, what our thoughts, thoughts are on all of those and what we, we kind of see. And then we had a speaker that talked about our unconscious biases and encouraged us to take tests to see where we fall with our unconscious biases. And then the women in the profession committee had a breakout session on how sometimes we, as women, have a harder time advocating for ourselves. We heard a group of women who shared some of their struggles. Big takeaway from all the conferences that I go to are talking with the colleagues from other cities and, and making those connections. So, when you have some questions, like this week, I had questions on some building official stuff, and I reached out to someone I talked to up there and got some answers. So, those are big takeaways for any conference. Some of the legislative updates, the omnibus bill passed the House and is going into the Senate. Some provisions that, in there that affect cities were the general authority for the local governments to bring certain projects to voters for referendum without requiring legislative approval. Affixed to the local lodging tax to align locally administered lodging taxes with state administered lodging taxes. So, that online travel companies pay the tax on the share that they retain from each booking. So, I don't know if our hotels have a lot that do it from online booking systems, but that's something that I had first heard of with this newsletter from the legislature. So, it's kind of something that I'm going to continue to watch because I don't know how much of our local hotels get that from different booking agencies online. And then there is a one million in one-time grants for cities for treating or removing trees infested with emerald ashbore. So, that was some of their provisions that, that would affect us. Now, it'll go to the Senate to see. Some of them were the same, some of them weren't. We did see another letter from our local ambulance service frustrated still about that bill. They're still not funding E M S at, at what is needed. So, a few talked to the local legislatures to make sure that, that we're still sharing our frustrations that they need to help fund and make that one-time funding for that. The community tree planting is May twenty-third, next Thursday, from four to six at Palm de Terra campground. As we saw tonight, we had MinDOT. Um, as we saw tonight, we had a MinDOT, um, grant for the mowers, we did receive word last week that we d- we will be receiving a grant for the snow removal equipment, so, um, gave them our letter saying that, yes, we'll, um, accept that, so they'll start the contract like they did here, and we'll bring that back. And then sustainability, so at our work session, we talked, um, about having our sustainability coordinator focus more on housing. So Griffin is currently working through the LCCMR grant, which specifies the projects that, that he can work on, which include more of those climate items. Um, but he definitely is willing to help us look at the housing crisis and what, what he can do to, to help with that. Um, there was one item in his current work plan, um, that he wasn't quite sure how he was gonna do, so before I even brought up the housing, he had talked about, um, trying to see if, if he could roll that one into, um, doing, looking into home efficiency rebate programs with homeowners and renters to find ways to get funds back, um, if they make their homes more efficient, so that kind of even helps our housing stock, if he can help um, get those houses more efficient, so, um, so, yeah, so he'll be working on, on that with us.
That's good.
Yeah.
Any questions for the, on the city managers newsletter at all? I have, uh, we'll move down to other business, I just have one quick question. I had a person contact me regarding campaign signs for, this individual's running for state office, and he was wondering if the city had any ordinance on timing of putting those signs up. We're about six weeks out from the primary, so it's really not any too early to start campaigning it.
There is a specific set of guidelines on when signs can be out. I don't know them off the top of my head, but we can get them, get that dates to you, because there is, I think there's specific guidelines on when they can be put up and when they have to be taken down.
Okay, yeah, if you could let me know that, and then I'll just recommunicate that to this person, okay, great. All right, any other business?
If we can go back to the tourism board recommendations, the paperwork didn't get put in there.
Oh.
But we do have some, um, we did meet as a tourism board. Um, so they had recommended, um, they had recommended doing, um, a tier one, which I believe, without, without my stuff, I'm sorry, I'm really bad with numbers off the top of my head, I think it's about sixty-five hundred, um, for advertising dollars, so, um, it's, it's the TV, social media, newspapers, all of that, it's the highest tier for the fair. Um, they are recommending using ten thousand dollars out of our fund for fair entertainment to help them entertain, um, get, get some entertainment out there. And then, was it around five thousand? I think it was around five thousand dollars for a shed, electric, and a cement pad and, um, pamphlet holders for out at the park. So instead of getting a kiosk, cause the kiosk was more expensive, um, we went with a shed, so people can go in. We'll have brochures, once we get those all made up, we'll have those in there, um, they have a place to, until we get this new system going, they have a place to write, um, their envelope out, um, just information there, so. I think that was it, they, they did talk about, um, Prairie Harvest Fest advertising, and then when I went to do the, um, paperwork for it, it was done at the last meeting, after the last meeting here, so. Those are the three things that they have recommended to council to spend funds on.
You said ten thousand?
Yes.
Okay, and that's gonna be specifically for entertainment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, so then the fair will get ten thousand for entertainment, and then the allocation to advertise.
Okay.
So Click Content would do their advertising.
All right. Wow, should be a whoop-de-doo.
Yeah, they bring in a lot of, the, I think you said they already have nine hotel rooms booked, um, with more coming.
Yeah, it's fun day, fun time. All right, any other questions for the city manager at all? Any other business to come before the council? Hearing none?
Can we?
Oh, sorry.
Do we need a, yeah, motion to approve what the tourism board?
We need a motion for that?
Yeah, cause they're just bringing the recommendation.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that we had to do that, sorry, well, we'll.
Take that back?
Undo that. Stay. All right, so we have, uh, I guess I'll entertain a motion to approve the tourism board recommendations.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Now we can talk about any other things to come before the council. Hearing none?